Good morning, everybody.
Hello, Jean.
We have somebody on a screen share. AFD, I don't know who that is. You're on a screen share. Joyce, do we know who that is?
I do not know who that is.
Why don't you dump him and let him come back in?
We'll call the meeting to order. Are you all set, Joyce? Oops.
I am.
Okay. Sorry, my panel just disappeared. There we go. Dan, do you know if Dan Rosemark, is that panel identified as AFD?
I don't think it is. I know he was trying to juggle another appointment, but I thought he had been successful. He would have told me if he wouldn't have been able to come on. And I have not heard anything from him.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know.
Are they still on, AFD?
Yeah.
Okay, Joyce, can you remove them?
So they can come back in?
And then they can, they can ask, come back in, and then you can ask them who they are.
Thank you. So, I'm sorry, I'm just waiting for a file to come up. Dan, you don't think we need to wait for Dan R? We can always admit him?
Yeah, I think we've gone through the issues long enough. I can always answer questions about the complaint, but basically the complaint is ready to be signed and needs to go out today, if it's going to be timely.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
And granted, was invited in.
Executive session, Joyce?
Okay.
A question, Jean, coming out and not dealing with the second, going back in?
Joyce, we have to come out and then go back in, right?
That's correct. And I have a second on the motion to come out of the first executive session.
Back in.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're out of executive session.
Thank you. So again, Dan and Dan opened my window to get a little fresh air, and now the train's coming through. I appreciate you, you know, helping us through this, you know, strategic process. As we're, you know, we were considering this appeal, and I will all entertain a motion from the board on the topic, on this first topic, so that we can move forward.
I'll make a motion to have the town of Kent not pursue an appeal for the direction of a cell tower on Richards Road based on counsel's advice.
Second. So I think it's important to discuss and have this discussion in open session so that for folks who are, you know, it's a funky time of day, and everybody's back to work after a long weekend. So obviously, we're not seeing a lot of people on the call, but I want to make sure if, you know, anybody who wanted to watch the call as a recording can get a sense of where the board was on this. And you know, I think grassroots efforts and grassroots groups are, you know, the one of the mainstays of especially New England, you know, that's where, that's where big things often begin in a small way. And PDA and the Spectacle Lake Group are, you know, their appeal that they're going to put forward, right? They've already filed the complaint is, you know, is a good fight to fight. But I think that our resources, we spent a lot of resources on the, the application and the, the I think resources can be better spent on this, you know, coming up with a plan and coming up with a a way to guide the town to the next fight for our ridgelines and our environment and our way of life here that marries the two things. Keeping the environment, keeping the, that, you know, what we look at out our windows and, and why we moved here, but keeps it sort of stitches that together with the need for coverage service, public safety service, being able to key up your radio and hear something on the other end, right, Ed? So that's just sort of my comment. Would love to hear comment from the other board members, so we can share this with the public.
My feeling is that we set out an objective to really question whether the town wants to be replete with cell towers, as is the push from not only the state, but the feds. And now it comes down to the local level, and I think this was an opportunity to insert ourselves into that discussion. It's clear to me that the appeal process would not be successful. Although I personally support the group who are trying to defeat the tower. But it brings a bigger question that selectmen Mattson talked about, which is, you know, again, going back to our original concept of what's the alternative? And I think this is where we, as the leaders, have to turn to an alternative. And as was advised by attorney, how do you spend your resources and the allocation thereof? And I think we need to spend resources, be it, be it a a broader conversation, a discussion about how are we going to deal with cellular coverage or some sort of telecommunication coverage going forward? Because this is only one hill, and we have a lot of them. So I don't know the answer, but I think it's, it's certainly, it's, it's worth our efforts to explore that.
My only comment would be in 2012, rather, this passed. The FirstNet Public Broadband Network passed. All 50 states opted in. The state of Connecticut, Dan Malloy opted into the program. At that time, he had 90 days to opt out, see if the state wanted to develop their own system. And they decided at that point, actually says it in the statute, in the whole folder that I have, that the state of Connecticut cited it would be too costly to come up with their own plan, so they decided to go in with the the state of the FirstNet program. And now, almost 20 years later, we're talking about fighting a plan that's been in place since 2012. And I think that at this point in time, we should, if we're going to do this, we need to represent the whole town and not one tower. And like Chris said, come up with our own. Start looking into a plan to appeal this overall for the whole town of Cat, and not one certain area.
My only comment to that would be simply that, that's just the prime example. If, if one governor decides for the whole state, it's akin to three selectmen deciding for a whole town. So I, I think what's really thrown into question here is, what is a plan that we can produce? Because 10 years ago, or nine years ago, whenever this was affected in 2012, I was never asked what my thoughts were. I don't think the town of Kent was ever asked what their thoughts were. But one governor decides to opt in because it's just easier. So I don't, I won't use that as an example of, of what and why we should do it. I think we should move forward and take our own position. Again, it may not be, it may not prevail, but I think it's the obligation of the three of us to come up with some sort of idea that's going to represent the whole town and hopefully not have to deal with three, four, or five more towers in the town of Kent.
Alrighty, we're ready to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody. Dan and Dan, thanks so much. Very much appreciate all the endless, endless hard work and advice and along this, this route, and will probably be in touch as we move to that that phase of, of planning.
I'm honored to represent you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
So we're going to move on to the next item, which is specifically called Executive Session Transfer Station Manager applicant. And so I'm going to ask to go into executive session for discussion of the transfer station manager position. That's a motion.
Second that.
Thanks. Any discussion?
Inviting the applicant?
Well, the only discussion I have is the
Wait, wait, we're not in executive session. Are you inviting Rick into it, Jean?
I was, I'm, I'm not.
You're not? Okay.
Correct.
Um, then, just to discuss the position is an executive session. My understanding was is that we were just, we were going to discuss it with the applicant.
Well, then if that's the case, then we don't have a meeting, correct?
Then we don't need to be in executive session. So I was, and we can discuss it in open session.
Let's do it.
That sounds better.
So I'll retract my, my motion. You got that, Joyce?
Yes.
Nice. I'm, I'm just looking for there's, in our employee manual, there's there's lots of things that need improvement. But there was, I was made aware of I don't know if it was specifically past practice, but that, a phrase or a clause, I don't really know even what to call it at this point, where if someone internally applies, that that applicant has to, that that application takes precedence over other applications. And after, and Joyce, I, you know, you've been with this employee manual for a long time, so I just want to
Can I ask it? Can I back up a sec?
Yeah.
Because it just seems like you're further down the stream than I am right now.
Okay, sorry.
Can you, we're talking about the transfer station.
Manager.
And we're talking about the manager, the new position. So my question is, in front of us, do we have applications? Or actually, maybe back up. It's my understanding that the process is you, who are the boss of the manager, for lack of a better term, you're the one who is going to come to the Board of Selectmen with applicants or one specific applicant to be hired.
Correct.
And so my question is, are you recommending someone today? Right now, that, that Ed and I and you have to consider? Or you, it sounds like you're talking about some other, some other iteration.
So I guess I'm looking for guidance from the board.
Okay.
To clear, just for a clarification. There's, there's a, a part of the employee manual that talks about, and I'll just read it. Vacancies, the department head shall notify the Board of Selectmen in writing of a job vacancy. The Board of Selectmen shall determine if the town will fill the vacancy. The department head would post a job notice internally via email to all department heads and on the town of Kent website and in such other places that may be deemed appropriate. So we did that. But there is some talk that this posting the job internally, if, and if there were a candidate internally, that that candidate would take, we would have to consider that candidate before we considered all external candidates.
So stitching all this together, in my mind, I hear the word Rick, the name Rick, and I hear an internal issue. So is, is, is it that Rick Osborne is applying for the manager's position?
Yeah, Rick has applied.
Okay.
My, so my question is, I want to make sure that I, I walk through this process in a fair, you know, on our letterhead, it says, we're an equal opportunity employer. I want to make sure that that's what we're doing, that we're following a process that is equal for anyone applying for the position.
And are the, can, can I ask the question? Are in order, three selectmen going to have to the right to interview the, any candidate? I'm not saying Rick or anything, but any candidate that's presented, or are we just going to have the right to vote yes or no on the person?
Well, the, the process is that, the process is it's laid out manual.
The three selectmen always met with whoever applied for any position and in private and discussed the the positions, how it worked, what the three selectmen saw, the future of the position doing, and then we voted afterwards. It was never like a small group or the selectman decided the best person out of the three or four and then came to the selectman to present it. I'm just saying what was done in the past. I don't know what they're doing now. And also, question about the Indeed hiring practice. We, the town doesn't post positions on the town website anymore?
Yeah, we do. It was posted on the town website.
For the manager?
Yep.
Okay. I'm just asking. I don't know. Okay.
Yep.
And just, I'm sorry. Just in terms of recent history, Ed, which I can only speak to in, in a selectman's role. The protocol was under, when, when Bruce was selectman, was when he, when there was a position that Bruce was authorized to fill, there was a small group that met with, that did the interviewing. And then there was a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen at which questions were asked. Sometimes a person was brought in, sometimes not. But the authority, I believe, still rests with the first selectman. But the, but the, but the courtesy was granted to the other two selectmen for discussion and support.
And is that small group of people still in existence?
I don't know. I mean, it was typically the
Who they are right now either? You know, that's what I'm
It was typical that it was whatever the department was. So as an example, if it was something like planning and zoning, it would be the first selectman, maybe the Chair of Planning and Zoning and and say the zoning enforcement officer or the land use administrator, if you will. And those three would do the vetting, they would do a score system. And, or maybe the administrative assistant as well. So and then that was then presented to the selectman. Again, this is only my experience in the last, you know.
Right. And that's basically when I was told that it, that sometimes there was a small group formed. Sometimes there wasn't, there's not a, actually a procedure.
Alright.
But it does say in the policy about the department head. And that's the first selectman in this specific case.
Alright, no, I appreciate it.
There are 22 applicants. Or 23, I don't, 20 some odd that came in through Indeed. So we have to you know, narrow that down, obviously. What, so Joyce and I interviewed for the transfer station attendant position, and we took, again, we had a big cadre of applications through Indeed, and that's just going to happen because it's a, you know, a huge platform. So we went through all of those applications, narrowed it down to a couple of people to interview, and that's, that's the same process that
And did any apply through the town website when it posted the position?
I'm sorry.
Did any people apply from when the town posted the position?
Joyce, can you?
And what date was that actually posted?
Are you speaking for the manager position or the?
Yeah.
We received two applicants internal, two applicants directly, and I don't have the dates off the top of my head, Ed. I can get those to you.
No, I was just wondering when the position was. Oh, you don't have the data when it was posted on the town website?
Not right here in front of me.
Okay.
Okay. Indeed, it was posted the 16th and with the deadline of the 27th. And I think the deadline, that was the deadline we posted generally. I don't know, Joyce can probably find out when it went up and when it came off. But it's probably the same rough timeframe.
Okay, and that was January?
November.
Oh, no, November, excuse me, okay.
And we, you can't tell if if somebody came through the website, applied through the website. We don't actually have like a form that would be identifiable as this person came in through the website, these people. But we can see who came in through Indeed, because you have to actually apply through Indeed.
Right, right. That I'm aware of, okay.
So just historically on the attendants, can you walk me through the process in which they were hired? So they, they, you put it out and posted it on Indeed. You got a whole bunch of applicants, you winnowed it down to a few. You got those, those few, and then I, I just honestly, in the, in the, in the last stretch of things, did, did we approve those two people? Did you come to us and say we're hiring?
No, I, I did not.
Okay, so if that, one, I want to make it clear that you didn't have to, I don't think. You can check me on that, but I don't think. But number two, I, I'm just all for consistency. So you know, if that's how you are going to hire people, fine. Then I don't know why we need a discussion. Unless you have a question of policy that we have to put in place so that we get that consistency. I, I hear, now what I'm hearing is that, the, the little wrinkle I hear here is that it sounds like we are obligated to, we being the town, via the policy are obligated to open the position up to people internally. And I don't even know what that means. Does that mean if the tax assessor decides she wants to be the park and rec director or something like that, we have to, we have to allow them first, is my first question. Secondly, can you read to me where in the policy? Because I don't even, I don't even think, I've never heard it. I've heard of it corporately, where people in corporate HR looks to hire within to give people opportunities. But where, can you read to me to pass the, 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 the policy that says we have to offer it to internally before we go outside? Because it seems strange to me.
Okay, let me, I'm actually going to screen share it.
Okay.
So that we can all see it. Too many windows open here. Okay. Can you all see my
Yep.
display? Great. So this is the section. This is the, what I read.
Vacancies?
This, yeah. So this was what I read in the beginning.
Yep. Department head shall notify Board of Selectmen in writing of job vacancy. So you did tell us that, okay. Board of Selectmen shall determine if the town will fill a vacancy, and we agreed to do that? Yeah. The department head would post a job opening notice internally via email to all department heads. Have you done that?
Joyce, did we send out a specific email to?
No, it went on the website.
Okay, so in effect, it's the same sort of thing, I guess, huh? And, and, oh, and, and the Ted website. And in such other places as may deemed appropriate. Well, where, where the hell, because it's a, we have to offer it to somebody? Is that below application process?
That's what that's what I'm not specifically finding. And I, I, there's, it's sort of an implication and implying the notice via internally via email to all department heads. And, you know, a lot of this is, you know, past practice discussion that happens. I just want to, I'm trying to head in the right and fair direction.
Alright, so I'm sorry, just to catch up again, I'm playing catch up.
And Joyce, is there, am I missing? Am I in the wrong spot? Am I missing?
No, it used to have more to this section, and it got edited down. It did use to say that we would accept internal applicants first, but throughout the edits, Chris, as you know, we've been through this manual counting lines. The sentence has been now modified, so it does not say that we do it anymore. It used to is, and that's the whole crux of the thing. So do we still honor that or not, is basically what Jean is asking, I'm assuming.
Okay, so what you're saying is historically, it's been a precedent that that's what we do. It used to be in the manual, now it's not, for some reason, being edited out. So then the question is, what do, so then what, so then where are we? If we say we accept the policy as, as it used to be, but it's not in here.
We're wrong, we can't do that.
Crazy.
Yeah, it's just nuts. Alright, so we're going, we're going, we agree that we're going to use the policy. Right?
I think that makes sense.
Okay, good. So we're all in agreement. So let's just use the policy.
Okay.
And does that mean that in a couple of weeks, or are you going to bring somebody forward, Jean, and for Ed and I to talk about or discuss?
Yep.
And can we, do we have, do we have a hard copy of the job description for the manager done and approved? And how many hours per week?
Yep. That was, we approved that a couple of months ago, but we can send that back out to you, so you can have it.
Send that back out to me, so just refresh me and, because I was wondering, how many hours are we looking at?
It is.
We were thinking, you, at one point, you had discussed about having the person be in charge of making sure the containers go out, which wasn't their job, and selling tickets and bringing them to the town hall, making deposits.
Sorry, give me one second.
But you can just send it out to us at any time.
Okay.
And also, my other question would be is, if we do, at some point, if we're going to do an internal thing, can one person hold two positions in the town of Kent?
Yes.
Yes, and it's currently in practice.
No, I know, but I'm just, you know, because it's, if we all of a sudden decide to make this position 35-hour-a-week job.
Well, we couldn't all of a sudden decide that. We'd have to go, we'd have to meet, the board would have to meet and rewrite the job description and
We were talking about changing the job description, correct?
Well, we, we we reviewed and edited the job description because it hadn't been
Done in years.
But if we were to, we, you know, other implications of changing that job description are budgetary, you know, it's not written, it's not in the budget for a full-time position, it's in the budget for a part-time hourly.
Alright.
So that would, that, that would be the major driver, I would think. Okay, so I appreciate the
Just one, one slight nuance, again, going back to consistency. If the last go-round, you guys hired two attendants without running it by the full board of selectmen as a courtesy, I think, I think something has to be established. I think something has to be established to either say that is policy. Or don't bother us with with the hiring. I mean, one way or another, either we're involved or we're not involved, but to be involved on one and not involved in another is to me. One inconsistent, but two, just, just not good practice.
Joyce, is there anything that you know of and I'll I'll. Reread the policy. This, this whole section is very sort of all over the place, so it's not like. Everything's covered in in the application process. Is there any, is there somewhere in the, is it in that first part, the hiring authority or it's not, it doesn't even say that? Hold on one second.
Well, the policy Chris is talking about is when we implemented several years ago to try to become consistent. Unfortunately, you know, there have been a few part-time positions. That, you know, if it's such solo hours, maybe that department head doesn't really think that they need a whole interview committee, so they kind of stray from that policy, but. It is a practice that we have utilizing for a while now, and it has not been put into the manual.
Well, but here is each department head shall have the authority to recommend to the board of selectmen the hiring, firing of any personnel.
Right, but it doesn't talk about creating a subcommittee and coming up with a questionnaire and then making a recommendation. It doesn't talk about the policy that we have implemented.
Right.
I think, I think, and be honest with you, until we get something. Confirmed in writing that the three selectmen should be responsible for the hiring of any new employee until further notice. Because right now we have department heads hiring, it sounds like the department head. Just decides to ask a few of their own people to hire their own person, and I think we should, until we get this all done and.
No, that's not, that's not happening. That's not.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying it is happening. What I'm saying is, till we have something confirmed in writing, I think the three selectmen should be responsible. For the hiring of any part-time or full-time employees until. We have a plan in place.
So that actually goes against the policy, but that, that's in conflict with this policy that I'm showing on the screen share right now. Right now, it says the each department head shall have the authority to recommend to the board of selectmen the hiring or firing of any personnel.
Right, so who's the?
You're saying.
Well, who's the department head of the transfer station right now?
I am.
Right, so I think the three selectmen should have the right to make the decision and then do the interviews.
So Ed, what what? The process has been when a selectman, and it is codified here, that the selectman, I mean, if you read it, it says each department head. Shall have the authority to recommend, doesn't mean they have the obligation.
Correct.
They don't have an obligation to, and what I think you're talking about is, can we codify an obligation? Rather than the authority, but that's not changing the fact that right now the selectman has the authority. As do the department heads to hire. And really, all we care about typically, the the board of selectmen is that it falls within our budgetary component. Framework, because we are typically not the ones to decide whether. Somebody is good at, at, you know, as a tax, the tax collector's assistant or the treasurer's. I mean, how the heck am I supposed to decide that?
Right.
I don't know that. So I'm gonna go off the recommendation. What I, all I'm asking for is consistency, and it has been inconsistent. And right now you're coming to me and saying, hey, one of the members of the selectmen. I didn't talk to you about the attendance I hired, but now I want to talk to you about the management I hired. So, you know, you gotta, you gotta straighten that out.
Yep.
And do we have to? I know within the state of Connecticut, normally a application. In the hiring process expires and you have to re. Everyone has to reapply, and since this went out in November and it's been three months now. Legally, could we maybe be required to resend this all out since it's been so long and we haven't hired somebody for the position?
Are you talking about the when? When a. When somebody applies for a state agency position through DAS and the.
Well, I, I know that.
The job.
And however, there's a closing date, and I think since this position has now. Gone on for three months. Do we have a closing date on when we can hire someone?
We.
Anything in the policy that says we do or whether we don't?
No, there's not a closing date.
But I would, I would, I would recommend that we get this thing taken care of quickly. So if you have applicants, why don't you just interview them? And then I would ask, even though it wasn't, didn't happen on the attendance side, I would ask as a courtesy. To come to the board of selectmen in total and and explain, you know, why this is the best candidate. Whomever it is.
Right, but what I'm.
Follow the policy.
Did we have a closing date for applicants?
Yes, November twenty seventh, I believe it was.
Yep.
And that was on the indeed.
Right.
Job posting and on the website. Posting. So I will, I will follow the policy.
Well, and 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 as Joyce said, there was, there was specific. Well, it was supposed to be policy. I don't know why it wasn't codified and ratified, but and we had a very, very straightforward system. Of a three-person committee who sat down and ranked people. And and then chose based on that and then came to the board of selectmen for for. Support. On that, and then there was another process behind that whereby a person is, once they are offered the job, they, you know, they, there's step by step as to. What credentials we need from them, what. Background checks we do for them. So. I don't know where we dropped the ball. Couple of years ago, Joyce, but I think that that's where we should pick it up and institute that. So everybody has to go through the same process. And not one person just hires a one person one way and the other. I don't think that that's.
An onboarding process.
Right.
An onboarding process that should be in the policy manual to follow very easily.
That, that's my point exactly, Chris, correct? That's what I was trying to say.
We're all, we're all in agreement on that.
Alright.
For sure. I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate the clarification.
We look forward to an applicant. I make a motion, we. What do we do? Leave?
Adern. Ten thirty-four. Thanks, everybody.